Good evening and welcome to the February 4th, 2020, meeting of the Yountville Town Council. If we could have the roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Mayor Dunbar is excused this evening.
Yes, and in fact, the mayor has landed in Washington DC earlier today by virtue of his role as the President of the League of California Cities. He is representing not only Yountville but 400-plus more cities at the National League of Cities Conference, and we expect him back in his seat on the 18th. And with that said, if we could turn to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Marita Dornbecker, who will have a birthday next week, to please lead us. Item four is adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt, or does anyone need to discuss changes?
Can I make a motion that we adopt the agenda?
Can I second? It's not up.
Okay, so we're using the buttons tonight. And everyone vote, please.
Aye.
I have no buttons.
I have no buttons. Aye.
So that is unanimous, adoption of the agenda. Number five is public comments on matters not listed on the agenda. And before we open this item, I just want to make a couple of remarks. This isn't, as it says, it is for matters not listed on our agenda. We do this because we want to hear from you. But, the piece of that is because it's not on the agenda, we cannot engage in a dialogue, we are very restricted in what, if any, questions we can answer at the time. But, please be assured, our staff is writing down everything, and most of us are writing down everything, and it is our standard and habit to follow up with someone who asks a question. We typically limit it to three minutes. I think that's probably not per speaker, that's not going to be an issue tonight, we're not going to have to shorten that. But, that said, if anyone would like to come forward to, for public comment. Oops, hold on, we have a cleanup on the front aisle. I don't know, Marita, we're going to be taking a sample of that.
I wasn't even talking, but my hands were going. I'm so sorry.
That's all right, not to worry.
No harm, no foul.
Thank you all for the quick reflexes. Okay, Mr. Pinkert, I believe you had your hand raised. And if you're so inclined, would you identify yourself for the record, please, when you come up? Thank you.
Warren Pinkert, one landy way. And was that water that you spilled?
It was, I just poured it from here.
I just wanted to be sure. I just wanted to give the council a quick update on the citizens' group that we organized to try and get the poll of the citizens in Yountville regarding the retail marijuana issue that there's been a draft ordinance about. And as you know, we had planned to do a petition and then present the results back to you all, so that you could use it in your deliberations. Well, after Kim Cook spoke at the last council meeting, we all caucused. And our plan now is to file a petition to put an initiative on the November ballot. We've met with the town clerk, and she was very helpful in getting us to understand what needs to be done and what we need to do to move ahead. We are retaining legal counsel to help us in drafting the initiative that we hope to put on the ballot. We still believe that it's incumbent on the council to poll the constituents of the town on an issue that's as important to the future of Yountville as retail marijuana is. We would love to work with you in that initiative, but we're up against a May-June time stop, so we need to move ahead. But we would love to work with you on this initiative, if there's any way we can do that.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comments, matters not on the agenda this evening? Mr. Huss Ali.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Padmeesh. I live just a few minutes from here, Forester Lane, Yountville. And we moved here after retirement three years ago. I worked as a surgeon and the director of the trauma unit at San Martin County Hospital Stockton. I worked there for 30 years and enjoyed my stay there. But during our visits, we discovered that little town of Yountville, beautiful, quiet, and friendly, and we thought we should retire here. And we are enjoying our stay here. Now, the question of marijuana clinic here, the cannabis, this is my feeling. We have only one business street, that's the Washington Street. If you leave the street a few minutes away, we're all people, a lot of people of my age group, and they're all walking on the street with their pets and having a good time. Now, I'm not against marijuana, and what I'm concerned is, where is it going to be? And if you open a clinic in here, you know, there are a lot of people who need it. There are people with cancers and chronic pain and things like that. But there are also few people who abuse and misuse this. And my question is, if somewhere here close by, are the problems going to stay there or spill over to my backyard? How about the safety for us, the children, the school, all these areas? And now, some people asked me, oh, how about alcohol? Of course alcohol, you know, we have a lot of wine rooms and tasting rooms, and alcohol is, has been accepted by the society for a very long time. And of course, there's a problem with alcohol, we have ways to check. The police and other people can check, they can do blood tests and breathalyzers and things like that. With marijuana or cannabis, there's no test available yet. And how sure are we these people are going to just stay in one business area and not spill over to other parts of the community? Until we make sure of that, I do not believe Yountville is ready for those kind of clinics. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else on matters not on the agenda this evening? Thank you.
I'm Gangga Padmeesh, his wife. I live in 19 Forester Lane. Yes, even I have been enjoying three years of really peaceful, no fear walking, even in the late night. I can go by myself, I don't even have to wait for my husband or anybody. That's been wonderful, which I could not do in Stockton. I'm thinking about what's going to happen. Am I going to develop these fears? What about other neighbors, who are much more helpless than me? What's going to happen to them? What's going to happen to the animals, which have been so peacefully walking around, except my dog, which walks a lot? So, with all these thoughts, my opinion is, I don't want anything to be brought into this town, which will disrupt the society. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see another hand out there? Mr. Donsker? Oh, no. Mrs. Rife?
Hello, my name is Carla Rife. I'm at 11 Forester Lane, that's R-E-Y-F-F, two F's and two Franks. And I am here just to bring something to your attention. I've been working on this project with my colleagues that are sitting behind me, and in doing so, we've talked to a lot of people in Yountville and said, what do you think about having a cannabis presence in Yountville? What do you think about having a store like this in Yountville? Surprised that the number of people who have said, I'm against it, I don't think it's right for Yountville, however, I'm afraid. I'm afraid to testify. I'm afraid to send an email, I'm afraid to put my name on anything, I'm afraid to send a letter, I'm afraid to stand up in front of the town council and say anything. Say, well, why? One woman said to me, well, I've worked on this issue before, when it was a statewide issue. And she said, I represented schools, and I represented nonprofit organizations. She said, I hate to tell you this, Carla, but I was threatened, I was harassed, and I was stalked. There are powers behind this, that I won't do it again. I've also talked to a couple of people who have said, I'm not, my husband won't allow me to put my name on any kind of letter or anything, because we want to get something from the council that we might need a permit for, or we might need a variance, or some other kind of help, and we're afraid to do that, because we're afraid of retribution in the future, because we were against them on this issue. So, in conclusion, all I want to say is that it might, I would recommend and propose that you put this on a ballot, on the ballot, and have, let's hear what all these people have to say, because they're not going to be afraid to vote on a secret ballot, if it's a secret ballot. But they are afraid to come forward because of these things that I just said. And I know you can't take any comments, or ask questions, and I can't do the same, but I thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank you. And I will say this, please, everybody who's here, spread it around, everybody who's watching or listening, do rest assured that there will be no kind of retribution. We are very open to public comment, we are very open to public input. You tell us what you think, that's what we're here for, is to hear what you think. So, please, pass that word on. Now, anyone else? Mr. Donsker?
Bruce Donsker? I wanted to go back a little bit to the last meeting and share some comments and thoughts from the last meeting. One of the things that Mayor brought up was the mention that there was some concern about a lack of trust between council and the public. That also came up in a letter to the editor, okay? And what I wanted to share is just an example of how that disconnect can happen, because we're all very busy every day. And again, Mayor brought up that everyone is totally open, no one has made up their minds yet. But also in his conversation, he said, what we're talking about here is having a legally regulated controlled business, that in my opinion, virtually the same as alcohol and wine. Now, the way I read that, and maybe I'm wrong, but the way I read that is, mind has been made up, that if this is looked at as alcohol and wine, well, we certainly have a lot of alcohol and wine around here, and would this not just be another business that instead of tasting alcohol and wine, is tasting cannabis, if the feelings are that those are the same? Okay? Second subject in the meeting, it also came up that there were a number of emails, and I apologize, I don't remember the quantity, that were in favor of cannabis that had been sent to the town. I don't know how many there were. It was not mentioned how many the town had that were against, okay? But looking at those that are in favor of it, the only knowledge I have is what's taken place in the last two meetings. And there, there were three people that have stood up that were in favor of cannabis. Two of those threes don't even live here. And those two of the three that don't live here sell cannabis for a living, okay? So just to balance the scales a little bit, what I've done is made a copy of all of the letters to the editor that were into the Sun that are against cannabis, and if there's a way to formally put those into the record, to have those there, to equal the emails that you've got, I'd like to do that.
Yes, thank you. If you could hand them to our clerk, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, a subject or topic, thought, concern, not on our agenda this evening? Thank you. We will therefore close public comment and move on to the next item, item five, which is our consent agenda, having one item, which is employment agreements for the Finance Director and Deputy Public Works Director. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or does anyone need to remove it for discussion?
I make a motion we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
When we get buttons, we'll vote.
I don't have a button.
Aye.
Hi. So, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 7A, this begins our presentation, of which we have four. The first one will be CalFire Public Safety Quarterly Report, and we have with us this evening, where is he? There he is, Assistant Chief Jason Martin.
Thank you for having me early on. It's always a pleasure to come and provide you the quarterly report for October, November, and December. Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. So during this period of time, again, we're fairly busy, we're staying pretty steady, though. We had 425 calls within this work period. As, with those calls, there was 104 to the town of Yountville, 164 to the Veterans Home, and 154 to the county areas, and three assistance calls to the city of Napa. We also broke it down to the type and kind of call responding to the Veterans Home for Veterans Home members, for the medical aids, 158, three alarm soundings, one smoke check, one public assist, and one hazardous condition, which could be a tree down or something to that effect. Okay, just making sure I was on par with the slides. And then, major events. So we had quite a few decent types of events that occurred with the response out of Station 12 here in Yountville. We had a hot air balloon that went down in the Mount Veder area. Engine 12 assisted in the rescue and medical assessment of occupants, and they spent several hours at the scene. We've had a couple of these in, just in the last couple of years. Then we have members that are stationed out of Station 12 that are also part of the hazmat team. So, on November 16th, Engine 12 responded to a mutual aid request in Sonoma County for a fuel tanker rollover. And they worked on containing 3,500 gallons of diesel fuel, and, which had a potential impact to the Sonoma Creek area and the San Pablo Bay. Then we had another hazardous material incident, which was at the Rector Reservoir. On the 16th, there was a small amount of mercury that was spilled. It was contained with the response out of Station 12, and then we sent our hazmat team up, just to make sure that we had full containment of the very small amount that was released. And then we did have an uptick in the amount of traffic collisions during this period of time, one due to weather. But typically, Station 12, just because of its location, responded to a large amount of traffic collisions, most with minor damage and limited injuries. The past quarter was an exception, it seemed, though most of the vehicle accidents responded by the station required the use of extrication equipment. So that just upgraded the type. And it's either the time of year with our visitors and/or weather. There was a special note to this, the wet weather certainly played a factor in some of the collisions. We would like to remind everyone to pay attention during inclement weather, and pay attention to the road conditions and distractions while driving. Now, the special events, these are always fun for the folks. I'm going to go backwards here, just so that they go in the right order. So, station personnel, they had participated in the elementary class Fun Run. They gave tips on exercising, running, staying active. It was a great time for the firefighters, and they also enjoyed participating and spending time with the kids. And then, in October, Station 12 participated in helping set up and staff some of the activities at the annual Halloween carnival. And then, that brings us to December, which firefighters were also, again, lucky to participate in the annual tree lighting. Station 12 personnel were happy to mingle and serve hot chocolate and provide fire prevention materials to all. This month, which is outside the quarter, but we started the Volunteer Fire Academy, which always kicks off in January, which is comprised of candidates from all nine of our volunteer stations within Napa County. And as they go through that process, they're taught fundamentals of firefighting, rescue, and EMS operations. And as soon as they complete the academy sometime in May, then they'll be reassigned to their appropriate stations. And then, the last part of this is our special message. After the recent power outages, many residents came to us asking about their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors going off. And we found that many of the folks, I'm sorry, here's the, this is the response from Sonoma County, that's up on the screen right now. Back to the smoke and CO detectors, many of the folks aren't aware that smoke detectors and CO detectors are only good for 10 years. And so they need to be switched out every 10 years, even if they're hardwired in. The other part of that is, sometimes with hardwired systems, they don't listen to the beep. The beep is to change out the batteries. So, again, we just want to remind everybody, when the time changes, change out the batteries, and also pull the smoke detectors periodically, they'll have an expiration date written on them, for your safety. And that is all I have for you, unless somebody has any questions for me.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Thank you as always.
Or kudos, yes. I think kudos from all around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for all you do.
Again, thank you so much for your support. Everybody have a good night.
Item 7B, continuing with our presentations, we have Deputy Steve Lombardi to give us the Sheriff Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome, Deputy Lombardi.
Deputy Vice Mayor, Council. So, this quarter, we had 1,181 calls for service in the town of Yountville. That's up 131 calls from the last quarter, last year, this quarter last year. We took a total of 49 written investigative reports, and we made eight arrests. Crimes against person, we had three simple assaults this quarter, and that could be anything from actually hitting someone, to just simply pushing someone or touching somebody. We had crimes against property, we had a total of 13 thefts this quarter, and most of them are, the majority of the thefts were from vehicles. Just a quick note, just make sure you don't have anything of value visible in the vehicle, so that way, it's not tempting for someone to take your items. We had five non-injury traffic collisions, zero fatalities, and zero injury collisions. We did a total of 138 traffic stops this quarter, wrote a total of 38 traffic citations, and we issued a total of 71 parking citations. Also this quarter, we were able to participate in some of the town events. We did the annual Yountville Day Parade in celebration, and we did the festival lights and tree lighting ceremony. The other thing we were involved, we got involved in was the Golden Ticket Program. We come out to the town, Yountville Community Center, the program, we're there the first Monday and the last Monday of the month, and we're out there to just have a cup of coffee, meet the people in the community. If they have questions, we're happy to answer questions and provide information if we can. And it's a good time, it's enjoyable to actually get a one-on-one conversation with people. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, any questions? And again, kudos from all four of us, I'm sure, and everyone else in the room, thank you so much. And coffee with a cop is a great idea, we have had that in our neighborhood, and it's really cool, so everybody go on out.
Thank you.
And now, our Napa County Library Commissioner, Mr. Scott Owens, will have a report for us, for all he has been doing to get our library into this century, and a fine job of it.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Dorman and members of the town council. I am Scott Owens, Library Commissioner for the town of Yountville, and I'm pleased to be here this evening to report on the recent activity of the Napa County Library Commission, specifically the Yountville Library. I will provide a brief report on recent financing methods, hurdles, and achievements toward additional hours at the library, and highlight the people, partners, platforms, and programs that are available to us at the Yountville Library. And while I recognize that the council and staff are aware of most finance and policy-related updates, I want to provide a brief recap for the benefit of the attending public. A timeline from point A, 2017, to point B, the present, 2020. When I last presented to you in January 2017, three years ago, I was here to review the Library Commission's recommendation to the Napa County Board of Supervisors for a circulation and visitation-based financial model, ultimately adopted by the Board of Supervisors in January 2017. The new plan was implemented with its challenges, including a forecasted risk of inaccurate visitation counts for Yountville because of a malfunctioning electronic counter, and the debate whether our reading room serves as a second entry point to the library. Councilmember Mueller's precise focus on budget and past allocation of resources revealed inconsistencies with the amount that Yountville paid for its extra hours, an agreement between the county and Yountville, and volunteer program that helped to have those extra hours. After a series of meetings in 2018 where commissioners learned that Napa County Library's visitation data had errors dated back to 2009, commissioners ultimately recommended, and the Board of Supervisors in August 2018, adopted a resolution to return to the circulation-only financing model. A renewed ad hoc committee of this council was formed to include council members Mueller and Dorman, who along with town manager Steve Rogers, met regularly with the county executive office. The ad hoc committee and town manager attended numerous Library Commission meetings to deliver coordinated public comment relative to decision-making process for library hours. Then, as the debate about Yountville's extra hours continued, in March 2019, the library director presented to the Library Commission a multi-layered recommendation that intends to increase library hours at all branches, and ensure a continued focus on quality customer service, and respect for confidentiality of library patrons, and to provide a stable funding structure for future capital needs. The layers of the recommendation included extra hours for all four branches, a cancellation of Yountville's contract to purchase additional hours from the county, and it incorporated recommended language from the California Attorney General's Office concerning requests for information for immigrant enforcement purposes. We celebrated the fact that Yountville would now be open on Friday. This is thanks to a dedicated group of elected officials, patrons, stakeholders, and constituents. So that's the timeline that I wanted to take you through for a refresher, because it has been some time since I've had the pleasure to speak to you about the library. Good news is, the Yountville Library is now open on Fridays. And as of July 1st, 2019, it's open on Fridays, that's every Friday. In a 2016 survey of Yountville residents regarding the library, residents indicated a desire for the library to be open on Fridays. And during my service as Napa County Library Commissioner, representing the town since 2014, residents have asked if the library be open for more hours. Each of you, councilmember Mueller, Dorman, Dornbecker, and town manager Steve Rogers, were instrumental in getting Yountville from point A to point B. A bridge to the future, a bridge over troubled water, a fabled journey down a yellow brick road with surprises along the way. So thank you for your attention to detail and your dedication to that process. And now that it's open, Yountville Elementary School students enjoy the game on programs on Friday, and Japanese Chit Chat, a new Friday program, is standing room only. Patrons are coming in. Again, since the library is open on Fridays and until 6:00 PM throughout the week, you see here that we've a plethora of programs for the public. Library programs for all ages, as identified with a designation, young adults or teen, adult, children, and F for Friday. And notably, with connections to our patrons at the Veterans Home, with the tech help that, which takes place at the campus of the Veterans Home. The summer reading adventure this year was rebranded, the summer reading program was rebranded Summer Library Adventure. rebranded Summer Library Adventure to allow for access and tracking other sources of material other than books. That's attendance to programs, time in the library, attending some of the specifically summer programs, digital media and even adult participation in those programs. And I do want to highlight that the Summer Library Adventure, specifically for the town of Yountville, had the highest number of completion rates among participants. And that is due in great part to the collaboration with the town's Parks and Recreation Department, with Samantha and Jennifer and the team that brought campers to the library to sign up for the program and participate very close by, if not on site. So it was quite the news at the recent commission meetings to understand how Yountville, which is often seen as the smallest branch or library, was the big winner in completion rates. Visitation. We do still, the Napa County Library staff does still track visitation, although it is not a factor in funding at this time. And I note that in August 2017, when visitation was used as a data consideration, it was one of the highest points in fiscal years 16, 17 and 17, 18. A low point was September 2019 at 2,177 and a steady climb at fiscal year end last summer. The current fiscal year shows a total of 20,513 visits to the Yountville Library, with the highest month being October at 4,704 visits, followed by another record breaker in July at 3,600. So visitation is up. And circulation, you'll note that we've averaged about, well, 2,515 materials monthly and a high of 3,068 in March 2017. As of January, we're at, January 2020, which tracked July through December 2019, we're at 15,372 in circulation with an average of 2,562, which is very comparable to previous fiscal years. So it remains rather constant with the level of circulation that the library sees. A note about people and partners, partnerships throughout the town. Success at the Yountville Library is a result of the people and the partnerships in Yountville. People make it happen at the library. There have been a few notable staff changes at the branch, at the Yountville Library, notably Ruth Barney retired in April 2018. Ruth enlivened the Yountville Library with her focus on food, wine, fashion and crafts, as well as her connection to the Yountville Elementary School. And in November of 2019, Dennis Crymeyer, Napa County Library Director since 2008, retired this past December. Dennis led the Napa County Library System, its people and programs for over a decade and leaves a legacy of innovative program, modern spaces and resources, a well-equipped staff and refined policies. Rebecca Simon and Fumio Whistler have teamed up to brighten the library with seasonal, thought-provoking displays. Their energy, empathy and enthusiasm enhance the environment. The friends of the Yountville Library, Lois Riker, Alan Tenscher, Tim Bringman, Pam Zidell, Carla Jaeger and Carol Fink, among other newer board members, provide ongoing support to the Yountville Library and its programs and remained, remain engaged in policy considerations. As I mentioned earlier, Samantha Holland and Jennifer Carvallo, the Summer Reading Program and the connection to the camp here in Yountville, helped to connect campers to the library this summer. Jim McDonald, the Yountville Arts Commissioner promotes the library programs, especially the poetry workshops with our second-term Napa County Poet Laureate Jeremy Benson. Volunteers focus on programs like the Knit Inn and the Grandparents and Books. And I understand that our resident Carla Reif, who just spoke, and her colleagues have approval to place three little free libraries in town. Sarita Lopez, Yountville Library Volunteer, was appointed to the Napa County Library Commission in 2018 and elected Vice Chair in 2019. Teen Representative Christopher Olivier from St. Helena is an enthusiastic addition to the commission and represents the teen and youth voice in the county. So what's next? We are looking at quite a modern approach with some of the smart device apps, namely those that connect to your iPad, iPhone, Android, library resources such as Libby, Hoopla and Canopy. If you haven't heard about them, take a look, download them. You'll find a lot of free items that are in the cloud and rather difficult to track for circulation, but the county does track those electronic resources in aggregate. And so this recent report, there was about 30,000 for the year thus far. The new library of things throughout the county includes items such as binoculars, telescopes, a digital microscope, bird watching kit and ukuleles. So adventure awaits you for these items that are tangible, these things that can be checked out and enjoyed throughout the county, indoors and outdoors. And coming to a farmer's market parade and outdoor space near you, the Napa County Library Bike Branch is mobile and wired to bring media to Napa County communities with Wi-Fi to check out on the spot, take your items to go. Heard a recent report about the great fund that they had at the Calistoga Tractor Parade in December. Program development includes some updating, updated programs in 2020. That's Rebecca and Fumio who are coordinating, coordinating a number of monthly events, Valentine's for Vets coming up this month throughout the year. And the Library Commission will be focused on some new policy considerations in the coming year, specifically as it relates to those apps, those third-party apps that patrons have the opportunity to download, other online resources that may gather personal information during download or registration. We're going to take a look at what those restrictions are and what kind of privacy policy we might, the commission might update the county policy manual. For, as I mentioned, Dennis Crymeyer retired and the search is underway for a new director of the Napa County Library. The recruitment ended in mid-January and interviews with the county executive office are this Thursday, February 6th. So thank you again for your dedication to our library, keeping it open and keeping it, keeping it open extra hours.
Thank you, Commissioner Owens.
Pleasure.
Counsel, any questions or thoughts?
No, just thank you because you've been a great advocate and a great representative for the town.
You really have. Having been on the council's library committee with Councilmember Mohler, I have seen you in action, not just for Yountville, although you do advocate for us. You just are such a great library patron in every sense of the word. So thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome.
And our next item on the presentation, under presentations, item 7D, the 2019 legislative update from our town attorney, Mr. Gary Bell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. This is now becoming a bit of an annual tradition. I did this last year as well. So every year, you'll probably know, the legislature introduces thousands of bills. There are 80 Assembly members, there are 40 senators and one governor. Each member of the legislature can introduce between 40 and 60 bills, depending on what the leadership decides for that year. So you can do the math, there's a lot of them. Not all of them make it to the governor's desk and the governor vetoes some of them, but all the ones that the governor signs, we take the time to review if they affect local government. Some of them affect the town a lot, some a little. The ones that are very impactful or that require changes to ordinances or policies, we write memos on. So I'm going to highlight a few of them tonight that are a sea change, a big change in law of interest to the policies and priorities of the town and worth discussing at a meeting. And those are them. So we'll start with the first one, which is AB 5. This is a sea change in the status of workers as independent contractors or employees. You might have heard of the decision Dynamex. It was a California Supreme Court decision that really overhauled how you determine whether or not someone is an independent contractor or an employee. For years, we'd relied on the eight-part IRS test. No part of that was determinative. It's a little bit difficult to apply, it still is. It's the law for the IRS. Then there was another California case called the Barellow Test, which had 12 factors and it was also hard to apply. And so when you'd ask for advice on independent contractor versus employee, your attorney would go, well, on the one hand and on the other hand. And sometimes the Department of Labor or Industrial Relations here in California would take a different position than your attorney would and it created some confusion. So the California Supreme Court changed this and created a three-part test. One, to simplify it, but also to address the emerging gig economy is really what it was. That's sort of a sea change in how people work and earn money. They're not really employees, are they independent contractors? They didn't fit well into either test and so some kind of new formulation was required. So the new three-part test under Dynamex, which has now been codified into state law for purposes of wage and hour and other requirements, but not all requirements of the labor code, asks if the person is free from control and direction and performance of their work. This is what it would take to be an independent contractor. Performs work outside of the agency's business. So if you're an attorney working for a town that doesn't provide legal services, for example, and if the person is customarily engaged in the trade and profession for which they are performing work. Those are the three, the three quests now. So those are now codified in state law for purposes of wage and hour, not everything. In one respect, it's created more confusion because now you've got federal law that doesn't say this, you've got state law that says this for some of us. There's exceptions in AB 5 for doctors and lawyers and chiropractors and a bunch of other people. And AB 5 doesn't apply to all labor protections, it applies to wage and hour, just to make it even more complicated. So this is now the subject of a big push by Uber, Lyft and DoorDash. They've already spent $90 million to try to overturn this just for them. So there will be a ballot measure statewide to try to do that. There's efforts in the legislature to carve out even more exceptions to this for particular industries. So this law is going to change. This is the legislature's first stab at it and it's likely going to evolve in the years to come. All right, sales and use tax collection. AB 147 implemented another case, but this one was by the US Supreme Court. They overturned nearly 30 years of precedent in a decision called Wayfair versus State of South Dakota. For years, for sales tax jurisdiction, you had to have a physical location in the state before you had to pay sales tax in that state. That's very different than jurisdiction for all other taxes and also for jurisdiction generally. It's usually based on context and whether or not you reach into the state. So under normal legal analysis, if you're sending a product into a state, that would give them jurisdiction over you, at least in some ways. But for sales tax, that wasn't the case. And there were policy reasons that the court adopted that just no longer apply in the online age. So they overturned it. And in California, the sales and use tax law, and of course, the town has that, Napa Valley Transportation has that, had what's called a long-arm statute. And it said, everyone has to pay sales tax if you have to under the federal constitution. That's what the statute said. So when this case came out, they upheld a South Dakota law that said, if you spend $200,000 or more, if you send that amount of product into our state, you have to pay sales tax. That was in direct contravention of current case law, but it was upheld. So the original guidance in California was, well, if that's upheld, then if you send $200,000 into California, you got to pay it too. But in AB 147, they increased that threshold to 500,000 to give a break to some of the smaller folks, even though they could have gone lower to 200,000, and decided to give a break for other online marketplace and other small businesses. But the effect of this will be an increase in sales and use tax because of the online marketplace, not just for the town, but also for counties and cities and the state of California generally, somewhere in the realm of billions of dollars a year. And nothing further to do.
Not all in Yountville will just want to make
Yeah.
Small percentage.
Yeah. Fair enough. So no action is required for this. Your current tax applies and now it applies even more. All right, campaign contribution limits. The Political Reform Act, which was first adopted in 1974, has been amended many times, sometimes by the people, sometimes by the legislature. For years, it said that local jurisdictions like the town could adopt campaign finance limits if they wanted to, subject to, of course, the limitations of the First Amendment and other state constitutional requirements. Now they've adopted a statute that says campaign contribution limits are the same as for per-election limits on statewide office for Assembly and Senate. It's currently at 4,700. The Fair Political Practices Commission, which implements the act, changes that number every year based on cost of living adjustments and other factors. So that number will change, we will go up in the future. It's set at 4,700. Town retains the authority to set a different limit. Going too low is a First Amendment issue. Going higher than that has been upheld, so wouldn't raise the same issues. So in the absence of town action, the limit is now 4,700 per individual. Surplus public land inventory. You might remember, and with the Veterans Home here, you've probably heard about it. The governor signed an executive order that said, all the state surplus property, let us know what it is because we want to consider it for housing. Well, now they're doing the same thing for locals because they think there's other surplus property the locals are holding on to that maybe you don't need. That's why it's surplus and they want to know about it. So if you have surplus property, it's got to go into an inventory and it's got to be reported to housing and community development. And you can guess what the state's going to do with that list. So I would imagine that there's a lot of formerly surplus land that now has a really good purpose behind it. Nevertheless, this is the law, so if there's surplus property in town, that's got to be reported. Takes effect in 2021, so there's some time to figure out what to do with surplus property. Larger jurisdictions are going to have to take a closer look at this. The Tenant Protection Act. This was also a big change. You probably recall there was a statewide initiative on Costa Hawkins to expand it. That's the law in the 90s that allows rent control for certain buildings that were built before a certain date, but not after. Doesn't apply to manufactured homes and there's other exceptions. This now applies more broadly. It applies to the town because if the town wants to impose its own rent control in some way, it has to be at least as restrictive as this law now. You can go more restrictive if you like, but you can't loosen the requirements of what's in here. But the basic requirements are, if this applies to it, and there are exceptions which I'll get to, is that rent increases cannot be more than 5% a year plus the rate of inflation, not to exceed 10%. Inflation is taken from the Consumer Price Index. It applies to all rent increases on or after March 15, 2019, it's in effect. That's, that's the big change and it also restricts the basis on which you can evict people from units that are controlled by this. There are a lot of exemptions though. Deed restricted affordable housing, dormitories, any house subject to rent or price control. The reason for that is there are eight cities in the state of California that have adopted their own rent control ordinances. They wanted to keep what they had in place because they've had it for a while and they liked it. There's other price control, which some jurisdictions, instead of rent, had limited already the amount of rent increases and other things, not how much you can charge at a base, but how much you can increase it once you have a tenant in there. Those still stay in effect. Any house that's been issued a certificate of occupancy in the past 15 years, so they exempted everything that's been built in the last 15 years from this requirement. Duplexes, if the owner occupies one of the units. ADUs are exempt from this requirement too. Short-term rentals. And any single-family residence condominium, to the extent that you let your tenant know that there's an exemption and the property is not owned by an investment trust, a corporation or an LLC where one of the members is a corporation. So if it's an investment vehicle, an investment company that's going around and buying up single-family homes, they got to comply with this. If it's an individual who happens to own a lot of single-family homes, they don't have to comply with this. That's a very short explanation for a very complicated law, but that's the overview. That's a very short explanation for a very complicated law, but that's the overview. All right, the Bay Area housing bills. There were two of them. We analyzed this. Vice Mayor Dorman had asked for an analysis of this, and I thought I'd go over them tonight as well. Two things it does. You might remember SB 35, which we talked about briefly during the findings presentation that I made, and also Sandra might have mentioned it at various points. It requires ministerial approval for housing projects of two or more units where at least 50% are affordable to people making 80% or less of the median income. And ministerial approval means no use permit, no other discretionary approval by the town. And it's an effort to streamline these types of affordable units, given the housing crisis. So one of these Bay Area bills, AB 1485, extends that, that same requirement to moderate income development, where at least 20% of the units are affordable to people making below 120, 120% or below of the median income. And that's really a reflection of the high incomes in the Bay Area, the higher rents in the Bay Area. The counties, the surrounding counties in the Bay Area that make up that, that region made a good argument that the state law doesn't really make sense, given the different economics of the Bay Area. So there's a special law that applies to that. The next one, AB 1487 creates is the San Francisco Bay Area Housing Finance Act. Among other things, it includes this county. It creates an authority which has the ability to raise special taxes and parcel taxes for affordable housing. That's basically what it does. So the current authority is the Board of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which will act as the governing body, and it is a separate legal entity. It has to spend its revenue on the construction of new affordable housing, affordable housing preservation, tenant protection programs, planning and technical assistance, and infrastructure to support those developments. And it has tax authority, so it can raise revenue to do that. The density bonus law. There's currently a provision in the municipal code, as there must be for density bonuses. This creates more density bonuses for low and moderate income units above and beyond. This will require change to the ordinance, and that is something that staff will be discussing in the future. This is a change to the prevailing wage law, and this isn't something that's frequently tinkered with, but it has been this year. Typically, pre-construction work like inspection and testing, which might be done by another firm, even sometimes during construction, to come out and make sure that the asphalt is the way it's supposed to be and up to specs and all the other stuff. That's subject to prevailing wages if it's inspection work and it's out in the field. What this bill does is make clear that that portion of the work is subject to prevailing wages, even if the work never goes forward. So if there's just inspection and site visits going on in anticipation of work, doesn't have to actually turn into what we consider to be a public work for prevailing wages to apply to that portion of it. So it broadens when prevailing wages has to apply by expanding the definition of a quote "public work" for purposes of prevailing wages. Now, this is different than the Public Contract Code, which requires competitive bidding. That's a separate process, and it has a separate definition of public work. This is only the definition for prevailing wage law. ADUs. I won't belabor this because I think we've gone over it a lot. Yeah. There's a lot of laws, and there's an ordinance, and the town's already in compliance with it. There's going to be more. This year's not going to be any different, and we'll be back going through this same process in the coming months. Lactation accommodation. This is a new one. It applies to all employers of 50 or more. But remember back to the Dynamex and AB five discussion I just had about what's an employee and what's an independent contractor. But if there's 50 or more employees, it requires accommodations. A lactation room or lactation that includes prescribed features, including providing access to a sink and refrigerator prohibits retaliation on that basis, requires a written policy to implement this. Employee, if an employer, including a local jurisdiction like the town, has 50 or more employees, it applies. There's a process for an exemption if you have lower than 50 employees to, to apply for an exemption to prove that you already provide substantially what this requires or you want to modify slightly from it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you say if there are fewer than 50 employees?
Yeah, so the bill authorizes employers with fewer than 50 employees to seek an exemption from the requirements of the law if the employer can demonstrate that the requirements pose an undue hardship by causing the employer significant difficulty or expense.
I see.
And the employer also obtains an exemption, must make a reasonable effort to provide a place for the employees to do the same activities. All right, the housing development process. SB 330, just going over this with staff today, and it's a long law. It makes amendments to the Permit Streamlining Act, which applies to discretionary permits of the town, all of them, creates shot clocks for making decisions on them. If the town doesn't make decisions within a certain timeframe, those permits are deemed approved. It was pushed by the development community based on a perceived lack of timeliness on local government. It's been the law for a long time. This amends the Permit Streamlining Act and the Housing Accountability Act, which was SB 35, which is what we just mentioned. So it makes amendments to both of those. The main amendments are, it applies to housing development projects which include single-family homes. It's important this law applies to single-family homes, too. There's now a two-step application process. There's a preliminary application requesting information that the state has outlined in the law. And then there's a second step where there's a final application where you request information that the state has identified and the town has identified. So there's a little bit of leeway there. All fees and development standards at the time of the preliminary application are frozen in place. So no new impact fees, no increases to impact fees unless the impact fee goes up by an automatic adjuster or inflation, which the town does for all of its fees. So those would still apply. You can't do a discretionary increase in these fees, though, halfway through the process. Or change the zoning or design standards halfway through the process. It also, and earlier today, I had said four hearings. It's actually five. So it limits the number of hearings that the town can hold on one of these applications to no more than five, and that includes appeals. So in this case, there's a ZDRB, which is going to hear the design aspect of it likely, not always, but likely, and then coming up to the town council for a hearing for approval. There could be an appeal. I think there can be an appeal in that process, but the five hearings is, is not going to be such an issue for the town, I don't think, given the structure. Some jurisdictions have a design board and a planning commission, and then there's another process in between before you go. This is meant to cut all of that out and limit it to five hearings. And the application must be approved in 90 or 60 days after certification of the Environmental Impact Report under CEQA. It's a pretty tight deadline. That clock is frozen if the application's incomplete. That's a Permit Streamlining Act requirement that still applies. So if they submit an application, it's missing something, you tell them that. The clock doesn't keep running. They've got to submit more information. Once it's submitted, you've got another 30 days to tell them, is it complete? Is it not complete? Staff handles this all the time, so very familiar with that process. But this is meant to, another way that the state is trying to streamline housing units. All right, so this is the things that the league thinks are coming up in the next year. I think it's always interesting because the lobbyists put this list together and kind of figure out which ones make it and which ones don't. The sixth cycle of RENA, efforts to penalize cities for not meeting RENA allocations. There are some cities that are way behind that haven't submitted reports and probably don't intend to ever do so. Efforts to cap, reduce, or eliminate local impact fees. That's coming, whether or not it's this cycle or next, and what that looks like is still unknown. And efforts to reduce mandatory parking requirements for new development. In the environment, wildfire prevention relieves sustainability and liability. That's really, you can read PG&E somewhere in there. Waste diversion and single-use plastic restrictions, that's coming. Cannabis delivery issues. You probably know Prop 64 says town can regulate or completely prohibit delivery, among all the other things. The Bureau of Cannabis Control adopted a regulation last year that said, if you have a valid delivery license in any jurisdiction, you can deliver into any other jurisdiction. And there's a lot of cities and counties that got together and sued them, and that litigation's moving forward to try to overturn it because that's not what Prop 64 says. Prop 64 can be amended, so there's some push now to see if the legislature's willing to step in and try to clarify it, not through a regulation, but maybe something in a statute. And then state and local taxation. There's, there's been a consistent push to reduce the bond requirement down to 55. There's been a push to try to reduce the special tax requirement down. That's going to require voter approval to get there. But that's always sort of out there, and with super majorities in both houses and a new administration after a year in, it's quite possible that some of the things that they've been trying for the last five to 10 years might finally make it. Labor and human resources, pensions, sustainability, and reform. That's an ongoing effort. Implications of AB five, talked about that. There'll probably be more exceptions, exemptions this year, I should say, to what's already in the law. Or perhaps an overhaul of that through the ballot box if Uber, Lyft, and DoorDash are successful. Workers' comp, off-duty claims. I'm not entirely up to speed on where that's going, except to say it might be traveling to and from work. Governance data and elections, open data expansion and privacy requirements, and California Voting Acts reform, district-based elections. That's an issue that still moving through the state right now. There was a law that capped attorney's fees that was trying to address some of the abuses with litigation around that. There's now a push to further incentivize district-based elections and might make it a little less discretionary going forward. All right, that's all I had. Any questions?
I have a question. Was there any, I forgot the name of the bill. I can't read my writing, but for surplus land. Is there a definition for surplus land that, it'd be very interesting, especially, well, give me the general definition, and do they have one for residential surplus land? How are they going to figure that out?
So resident, for purpose of the Surplus Land Act, which is a state law, in order for the piece of land to apply to that, it has to be 5,000 square feet or more. So there's that.
That's pretty small.
It's pretty small, yeah. And beyond that, it can't be within a certain distance of a historical resource or a park, and there's other requirements that, that make it exempt from Surplus Land Act. But assuming that none of those exemptions apply, the process requires that the town be the owner of it. And if so, if it's no longer needed, this is basically the process you have to go through when the town tries to sell a piece of real property that it doesn't want anymore. Go through that. If none of those exemptions apply, the town council declares it surplus by following the procedures in that act, and essentially requires a vote. There's some findings that you make. We don't need it for anything, can't be used for these purposes. Once it's declared surplus, there's a statutory list of agencies that you have to offer it to for sit. They don't want it to just, if this is already held publicly, they don't want it to go out into the private market. They want to see if another agency wants it for a park, or if another agency wants it for housing, or if another agency wants it for any other purpose. You go down that entire list, and if all of them pass it up, then you can put it on the, then you can put it on the open market.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lot of control.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions for a town attorney? Councilmember Dornbicker?
Yes, please. In the first one, under the independent contractors, and we were, you were talking about the three-part test. I got free from control and works also outside in other capacities.
Yes.
And what was the third one? I missed it.
So it's free from control and direction in the performance of the work. So the person who's hiring, this person can't control and direct their work. Must perform work outside of the agency's normal business, and the person must be customarily engaged in the trade that they're performing.
What does that mean?
So an independent contractor being hired to be an attorney is actually an attorney.
I see.
That's not really a good example because only licensed attorneys can be attorneys, but I think you know what I mean.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Very thorough and thought-provoking. So moving on now, that was our last presentation, number eight, item, agenda item eight, public hearings. Having none of those, we will move on to item nine, which is administrative and regular items. We have two of those. A, which is our upcoming fiscal year 2020, 2020 dash 21 budget parameters and key assumptions. And then also connected to the budget, item B, which is our capital improvement program. And before we begin the staff report on the item A, the budget parameters, I had a discussion, and this is for counsel to weigh in on, please. I had a discussion with the town manager of the best way to proceed for our questions and discussion of this item, because to me, the report, although it's one, is sort of split into two. There's sort of the foundational piece of it, which is here are revenues, here are reserves, things that we see year in, year out with some change. And then there's the second piece, which is, I think, called new undertakings. And so I'm wondering if you all think it would be, and I, and town manager, if you could weigh in, and Director King, if the report can be given as presented, but for our discussion, maybe we could sort of bifurcate, or at least call out, this is the piece I'm talking about, because staff is going to need direction on both, but I think possibly more direction on the new undertakings. Does that suit everyone?
Oh, yeah. I think as we begin this process, one, this is our formal launch, although we've been working on budget, but this is a staff opportunity to share with you the basics by which we're going to build the manager's proposed budget. And I use the word proposed budget because you're not really making any decisions on a budget today. We're sharing with you how we're going to go about in the next several months to prepare the budget and what you can expect to see in the budget. And then the latter part of the conversation, as you were alluding to, where we call new undertakings, also includes a broader question. Are there initiatives or efforts that the council has expressed an interest in that we haven't captured? Many of these things, especially in the new undertakings, have a level of refinement that we still need to do as we prepare them for the budget. And many are these are foundational. So we're sharing with you where the revenue is coming from, what the core is. We're very fortunate as a tenured manager working with a tenured council. We have a good understanding, and we have a pretty good foundation by which we build the budget. But I also think it's incredibly important that we check in with you to make sure that the things that we're looking at and the initiatives reflect the council's priorities. So this is, this is where we start, and I'm certainly happy to break as we conclude the presentation with you on some of those thoughts, because that's really where we're, we're going to be working on. We want to make sure that you understand the basics as well, and if we're touching in, because I will have to apologize, our presentation by our library commissioner, but we carried over one theme that has always been important to us, but it doesn't need to be presented in the budget the way it is. So I have to own a, an evaluation where I missed because we talk about maintaining library hours. The good news is we are maintaining library hours. We won't need to continue to pay for it. So this just shows again how it's good for us to be taking a look. We're going to kind of, Finance Director Cecilia King's gonna, Cecilia King's going to kind of go through. I'm going to balance in case her voice goes out. So we'll balance that, and then on some of these, if there's policy questions or thoughts you're having on it, it'll be a conversation amongst all of us that way. So Cecilia with that?
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members, and again, excuse my extra nasally voice tonight, as we review the budget parameters and key assumptions for fiscal year 2020, 2021. This is considered Budget Workshop number one, and it's really the kickoff to our budget process. The report includes highlights of our top three general fund revenues and what we anticipate receiving for those revenues. Transient occupancy tax at 7.3 million, sales tax at 1.3 million, and property tax at 1.7 million. It also covers the estimated cost of some key general fund expenditures, such It also covers the estimated cost of some key general fund expenditures, such as sheriff services and fire services, which we contract for. And we will be renewing contracts this year. So, in the report, those are estimated costs. Hopefully, they won't change too much, but we will know more further down the road when we get those contracts executed. And we can report more accurate numbers at the Budget Workshop number two. It also includes PERS pension and UAL costs. The January CPI, Consumer Price Index, should be released mid-February, which will help us to budget for salaries and benefits. And again, we'll have more info on this at Budget Workshop number two. And we are estimating a small increase in health insurance costs this year. Some high-level goals for this budget cycle are to maintain service levels, produce a balanced budget that adheres to set policies, and all while adequately funding reserves and continuing to invest, hopefully, in the Section 125 trusts that will help with future OPEB and pension costs. And then again, the new undertakings, like Vice Mayor Dorman mentioned, some of those are items that staff felt might be important to council to discuss and possibly include in the 2021 budget, such as improving code enforcement and compliance efforts, the MCE Deep Green Program to use more renewable energy, possible leaf blower replacement assistance program, or even the potential purchase of the Yountville Elementary School site. So, at this point, I'd like to invite any questions or comments of what you see in the report, or any discussion of other efforts and initiatives that council may want to add, or have staff look further into.
Any questions for Director King? Either on the foundational or the new undertakings?
I have a question for the town attorney. In terms of the potential purchase of Yountville Elementary School site, where, with two of the council members being within the zone of sphere of influence, we get to say everything up till the defining moment? So, how do we participate in this? And I say, yes, I wanted to be a part of it, but I don't participate in the final decision. I'm just a little confused in that process.
So, the standard for that is owning property in less than 500 feet from the site, or between 500 and 1,000 feet if it's likely to affect values of the property. That's the standard. It prohibits participation in the government decision to actually affect that piece of property. So, in this case, allocating money to this at this stage, there's no guarantee it's going to be spent for that. You know, you could pull it out tomorrow and hold a special meeting and pull it out. At this point, it's speculative that that's actually what it's for. There will come a point when it's no longer speculative, right? At this point, you're simply talking about making a decision about what money could be spent on, not that you're actually spending money on that particular thing. If and when that decision does come up, though, there will be a need to recuse.
Thank you, Dorman.
Any other questions for any of our staff members on these? So, I have a couple on the, what I'm calling foundation or general. So, I calculated up TOT, sales, property, and I got about 10.3 million in anticipated income, but, or revenue or income. But now that, just to be clear, that does not count other monies that we get, such as 600,000 from Measure T and...
Correct.
And 60,000 from SB1, the gas tax. So, there will be additional money coming in.
Yes, those are special revenue funds, and those, I think, will be presented in Budget Workshop number three.
And then the reserves that you've called out currently stand totally at about 5 million.
Yes, that's the emergency reserve fund and the revenue stabilization fund, and then the leave buyout.
Yeah, the five.
Budget contingency and legal contingency reserve.
Okay.
Yes.
Then a couple of questions on the new undertakings. The MCE Deep Green Program, I am assuming that that has been, that investigation, or has, not investigation, that looking into that has been suggested or requested by a council member or two?
Yes, that's been a request from the Climate Action Committee. And it's also, what I'd also point out, your Climate Action Plan indicated that we would work towards that. And we started with green, and now we're going to deep green. So, I mean, that's, we'll have the budget included. And I will point out, that's just, that's a decision we make. It is consistent with the Climate Action Plan, and it will have benefits in the greenhouse gas reduction in terms of how we do our account. But that's where, and I will point out, the new undertaking section generally comes from staffs listening to the council, hearing what you're talking about, what are the issues, or things that we need to do to comply with state law, or something coming down, or what we're seeing happening. You know, a good example that's not applicable, but it was at one point in time, I needed to keep putting the renovation of Town Hall in front of the council, you may recall, so we could build money to do it. So, those are the types of things that we look at that fall into this. And we're very fortunate in many ways that we've accomplished a lot, and now we're able to, I think, look at where our service levels are. And I don't want to gloss over, but maintaining our service levels means maintaining a high level of service. I mean, the service priorities and the programs that we're doing at that level. But we also, at this point in time, we're able to, you're able to also start making some decisions where, in a good, in good times, we may be able to set aside some money for future needs while still doing the programs and projects. But you're seeing a less, less projects, if you will, on some of the construction, a little more increase on streets and roads now that we have a little more sustainable with Measure T and SB1. So, you're seeing that activity. But compared to some years, you're seeing less construction activity, because we've built things, and now we're going into maintaining things. And we're coming off, you know, a fairly large endeavor with regards to the general plan process. So, you're just seeing some things that are evolving. One thing we probably did not include that we should have put in there is, due to our friends at the county making some decisions on how they want to run elections, our election cost will be going from about 15,000 an election to 40 to 45. So, that will be an increase that you'll see in this year's budget. And it's not one we have. We are not going to go out and run our own elections. That is not going to happen. I shouldn't say, we would not recommend that as a course of action for you, and we don't believe it would be financially prudent for us to do that.
Thank you. And so, then I have just two more actually scheduling kind of timing, timeline questions under new undertakings. Parks and Rec, exploring options, possible changes in structure and staffing to programs that may be affected by the closure of the elementary school. Will we hear about those changes as part of Budget Workshops two and three?
There's two things I'm going to say on this point, Vice Mayor. What I'm telling you right now is, I'm not making any staff changes in the upcoming budget because we don't have enough lead time from the school district to make meaningful decisions about whether we have the right primary staff. So, in fairness to our employees, I want to make sure that they're comfortable, because we may need to reassign some things to have work. And then, once we know where the school is going, next year's budget may likely include the potential for some restructuring. But I wanted you all to know that even though we're talking about it, if Samantha and I are going to make programmatic changes, it needs to be done now. And the school district is not giving us the ability to do that. So, you know, we will, we will continue with the five permanent staff positions supported by numerous part-time for this fiscal year. And then during that year, we'll probably look at, and certainly be bringing back to the P-RAC, Park and Rec Advisory Commission, and the council if we're going to make any programmatic changes.
And then my second timeline question is the financing options for the completion of the Water, Washington Park Waterline Project. Your report also mentioned the March 17th meeting. Is all of that sort of going to, so what we learn at the March 17th meeting will help us in Budget Workshops two and three as we look at this financing?
The March 17th meeting, I think, was a review of utility rate revenue and what we have received compared to what was projected by Bartle Wells when we did the utility rate study. So, I think that's a separate...
They're separate.
Not connected. Yeah, thank you.
They are, I mean, the topic and, what I would say right now is, when we look at Washington Park, I think, for those of you that remember your budgeting, we have put a certain amount of money in the 150 plus minus a year in anticipated waterline projects. So, we have a certain amount within our current financial structure and our current five-year rate cycle allocated towards waterline. I would see this more as a cash flow issue, whereas we didn't anticipate Washington Park at this point in juncture. So, we're going to need to move some things around. So, we're going to have to advance some money based on the final project cost. And we may just need short-term borrowing, because we have that annual increment that we're expecting to pay. So, we'll be doing a little more analysis for you on what that is. And part of that is, I need some real numbers on what the project comes in, because I don't want to go through a hypothetical with you on 500 or 600 and find out the bid comes in at 750, because it shifts. I mean, it's just enough. But what I will tell you is, we believe we have three or four options for you, and really it is cash flow.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? So, any comment from the public? I see a couple of public here, but no comment. All right, therefore, no public comments, so let's move to council discussion. Councilmember Durham, do you mind beginning?
Sure. Hold on. Sorry. I really don't have a lot to say. Everything's been discussed with you, and everything's coming up, so we will be prepared for this. I mean, some of the new undertakings are all going to be discussed in the future as well. So, that'll be more of the part of the discussion, once we have more information as well. I do have comments on them, but we need to understand them better.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbicker?
Well, I'm sort of of the same mind, because there are some things that I would like to propose that we discuss in new undertakings, but I'm, you know, I'm not ready to bring those up yet. I'd rather we, you know, find out more about the funds. I'm also concerned about the water rate increases that are going to have to be made. So, but as of right now, I'm following what we're doing, but I'm not ready to jump in.
If I could, Councilmember Dornbicker, even if you have an idea, it's helpful to share so that staff can do any vetting or analysis on a potential program or idea from a cost standpoint. So, just, you know, chat with me, and I can follow up with you on that. I want to be really clear right now, we're not advocating rate increases above what you've already approved in the five-year rate cycle. And that's why I'm talking about the fact, you have a five-year rate cycle program that has money, and that's why, what I'm really needing to do is, instead of doing several small projects, we're going to need to do a large project and pay for it all upfront. So, that's why I talk about it being more of a cash flow issue, and we may need to do some short-term borrowing. And we may be able to do that within our own, our own service funds, so that it doesn't require external borrowing. We will be bringing that back to you, because as we've indicated, you know, that project will likely proceed potentially yet this summer. So, it, we don't know if it's going to come out of this year's budget or next. We're doing the design work right now, and more than likely, it'll be a budget item. But I just want to clarify that we're not anticipating, we will figure out a way to do it within the approved rate structure.
The other thing is that I would like us to consider, since we are making this effort to engage the community and create the Yountville Neighbor Network, we talked about it when we had the last disaster preparedness workshop, about going forward and having some sort of budget for one annual event outside of the workshops.
That's already included.
Oh, good. Yay.
Councilmember Mohler, any thoughts?
Well, one of my favorite topics, because it was, we had nothing when I was, first came on the council, virtually in 2008, and we've made a lot of strides, but I bring it up every year, because one of the most important things to me are our reserves. And I, I think we've got some good numbers here, but I'm looking around at some of our other cities, and they're ahead of us. And I would still like to, and we keep saying, TOT is going to flatten out. We've seen a little dip in sales taxes. We know all about emergencies, and this is something that's very important to me, to maintain or increase these reserves. For example, general fund, emergency reserve, just 20% of a general fund expenditures. We're at 12%, so that's not a lot of money, a couple million dollars. I think we really, this is the time where we don't have to dip into that, these funds, but this is the time to be putting into these funds, because the day will come. Well, we don't know when that's going to be. So, I guess I'm saying maybe a review of these policies. We've got, you know, a minimum of 25% for rent stabilization, a minimum 5% budget contingency. I think those numbers need to be higher, and even the general fund, 20%, a minimum of, or really take a hard look at increasing these numbers, and just have that discussion. It may not be a mandatory thing, but we need more of a plan than kind of, we have some extra money.
A couple of thoughts on that as we move forward. One, as we put the budget together, Vice Mayor Dorman was correct. We've got a general fund, and then we have other fund things that come in that will get us somewhere towards about an $18 million combined all services budget. So, certainly, when we look at this, we can look at what, you know, when we start looking at our expenditure plan, we may be able to build in some additional allocations to those reserves. And we may want to look at incrementally raising the target, because the other reason, you may recall, last year, we recommended making them a full reserve and not just a budget allocation.
Right.
That's because we don't have to start with them in the budget process. They're sitting there with that money. So, when we look at what we're talking about this year, we have the ability to, are we covering everything else? And do we have some that we can move over and increase? So, we'll do that as part of the analysis, I think, you know, where, this will actually allow us to, in my opinion, be clearer on where that's going, because when we always had to reallocate, now we know we start there. Can we maybe build in a $250 contribution to each of those? And I'm just picking a number for this person, for this purpose, while still meeting all the other things you want to do in the budget. And then, we may still use our practice of the unassigned fund balance. But I think we're going to have some capacity in this year's budget to look at a few things like that. So, that's, that's good feedback for us, and...
Because the time will come where we're not in this situation. So, this is the time to put our nuts away for...
You know, and I'm just...
That's one of my favorite things for future councils, I mean...
The prudent manager in me is always going to encourage you to put a little bit in both, because under our policies...
Right.
We actually have places we start, and the emergency has the most restrictions. So, in some cases, the revenue stabilization gives the council the most flexibility along with your annual contingency.
But, I mean, if we're restricting ourselves unnecessarily in these reserves, let's, I always, let's have that conversation, so...
I'm just saying, but again, hearing you about, you know, as we build the budget, look at, there's an ability to increase those. Yep.
Because, you know, if we need that money, it is our money, it's still there, but it will be there. Just like, you know, the school, we really hadn't set anything aside for that, and... Just like, you know, the school, we really hadn't set anything aside for that and that's kind of like popped up. Of course, we can always borrow. But anyway, I think I've made my point there. The other thing is the, I know the, it was interesting to see that the sales tax is actually decreasing. So, and the wishful thinking, which I hopefully, you're right, is with Perry Lang kind of coming back on and handwritten wines that that may at least keep it neutral. Have you done kind of numbers to guess what two new businesses might actually do because?
Yes, but I would also say we're looking at, part of this is just the extended duration of those closures and you actually corrected, I mean, correctly pointed out, these aren't new. What's happening is it's replacing something that used to be there.
Right.
So, and if you may.
But this could be, you know, it could be a cycle and it could be a continual cycle and could have bigger naters than we're expecting. Who knows?
You've had three, if you look at it, because Hurley's was offline for a number of months before it came back as La Colinda. So you have no revenue. You have no revenue from Perry Langs. Then they come back on. Now we have limited, very little revenue at Red. So we really haven't, we haven't really increased anything new that is generating sales tax. And I will also, part of the reasons I shared a little cautionary on Wayfair is, Wayfair is doled out based on percentage of population and allocation. And we have a significant population that doesn't really buy a lot, so it's not going to translate into a lot of sales tax coming into Yountville. We will see some increase, but I don't think we will see the, we won't see a significant. And we also have some ongoing retail transitions. So I, I think we're going to see a better year in sales tax would be my projection, but, you know, we're still not, everything we normally have is not operating. We have Red offline. So in our community, restaurants are major generators and, you know, Red was in the top ten.
I'm just saying that line is flattening out and I think some planning, I mean, yes, one more, if Red does kind of come back online, that will take care of it. But to my next topic regarding property taxes too, we're seeing things flatten out here. We've kind of looked at them countywide for another budget committee that I'm on. And the county and city of Napa, they're increasing a lot. The Napa, you know, there's a lot of growth going on there. We don't have any more land. We're not going to kind of see those numbers. We're seeing things kind of flattening out here. So I think my point is that, and there's a lot of other hotels, if we're going to go back to TOT. So I'm not trying to be a doomsday sayer here, but I really think the reality of a lot of this stuff flattening out is coming. And I, I think the same way for property taxes because of our lack of land primarily. So really kind of planning, you know, for some long-term, we, as our town manager just said, we deliver a high level of service. That high level of service keeps costing more every year and this is our income and we're kind of, kind of taking a wide view. It's not probably going to keep up with that high level of service needs. So I'd really like to, maybe, you know where I'm going.
I'm not, you know, you hear me every budget cycle talk about the plateauing and we do the graph of, you know, we've had benefit of, from our property tax assessed valuation, we've had some commercial real estate turnover. And that's what's really feel, fueled at our recent growth. And, and we'll, we'll get a little bump because the R rate sale to a, a second party is not yet included. But I don't, you're not finding a big, you know, we're not estimating, you know, we're taking our base and basically doing the two percent because we don't, you know, our residential property turnover is twenty to twenty-five homes a year, not moving the needle a whole lot. You know, even at a million to a million five, which is a typical or a little more now price, but it depends on the basis from where they were. So I don't disagree. I mean, I mean, and then the other area that we have obviously is a modest amount of fees and charges, you know, planning-related, building inspection, and a very modest amount of park and rec fees.
So we do the kind of budget every year, so where I'm kind of going, be nice to have some longer-term projections. I, I know they're difficult.
No, no.
But I see head nodding and smiling. This is good, so.
We will be presenting shortly.
All right.
A longer-term financial plan.
Okay. All right. Great. And I, I'm optimistic, very optimistic about all of our retirement because at least for the last few years, I think this discount rate's going to go down and these numbers are going to look very good. So, but that could change, you know, in, in a few years too. But right now, the prognosis is for good economy ahead. So that, that area I'm very optimistic about right now. So in terms of new undertakings, I, I think overall, you know, we'll comment on each one of those when they kind of come up. I won't give you my opinions on any one of them right now. But overall, my thought is that they, except for the last one, potential purchase of the elementary school site, the rest are, the way I'm looking at them are fairly moderate in costs, except for Washington Park. Again, what are kind of those big numbers for that Washington Park?
We're waiting on that, but we're looking at something order of magnitude, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand plus minus.
Okay.
So it's doable.
Okay. It's seven figures, below seven figures, I'm okay. Okay. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. So I, my thoughts are similar to Councilmember Moller's. I like to have a robust reserve. And I would like also, I would appreciate a longer look ahead because I think although we're very, very fortunate financially, maybe it is time to have a really serious policy discussion about, you only have so much money. So do we put a shade sale somewhere or do we put that two-hundred thousand in a reserve? I mean, maybe it's the time to have those kinds of discussions now because at some point, we're going to be right. Things are either going to go flat or not be as robust as they are. Again, I don't want, I'm not a doomsday person either, but I think it, it might be good to have that discussion as we go forward on our workshops. The same thing on the yes property, and I know that I asked this question when we recently passed our ordinance, that I am in favor of it as a, a new undertaking, but I would also, and this really has to do more with policy than budgeting, if it's not a flat-out purchase, there may be other assistance or other ways to get to where we want or need to be. So I, maybe that's not a budget discussion, but as I look at new undertakings, that occurred to me. Other than that, I, I think it was really a, oh, on the reserves, I also would agree with Councilmember Moller to look at our policies because the emergency, as I recall that, and we talked about this last year, I think, that it has to be a declared emergency to trigger that. And we may want to look at that again. Maybe we don't, maybe we do, but that's the availability of our emergency dollars.
And also what I would say to that, when you look at it, you can look at the revenue stabilization and the emergency reserve being in tandem. And you can look at, maybe you put, you know, maybe your target is to get the revenue stabilization to four or something, or a pol, I mean, I think we can work with you on those and, you know, because it may be time to say, we want a target to reach this and here's how we're doing it. And, you know, as I mentioned when we're building this, we can, you know, we can try to build some allocations in, much like we do with OPEB and pension liability, build it into the budget. We also mentioned to you, we're looking at Fund eighty-one and eighty-two and we're doing some analysis in future years, we may not need to fund those as highly as we have because we put some one-time money in to jump-start them. So there's some fluidity that we're still flushing out as we build the budget because those are all things, and again, I want to stress, and I think somebody, I think maybe Councilmember Durham used it, this is really a very incremental budget. I mean, when we look at the leaf blower grant program, you know, enhancing code enforcement, you're, you're really looking at a base and not, so, you know, some of those one-time things that we're doing, they can be, you can, they're going to get reallocated into something else. And that may give us the ability to, to put a little money into the reserve straight up. So it's, it is, it's a positive situation. And I do think, again, all of these budget decisions reflect what are your priorities and what are the expectations. Ultimately, the council makes those decisions.
Something more, Councilmember Moller?
Yeah, a couple of things too. I just want the, the public to realize that this leaf blower subsidy, it's just a placeholder. We have not had this discussion amongst us, so we're just being proactive.
Well, and I, and I'm saying, based on the feedback, again, this is a great illustration. Council has provided some tidbits, so, you know, I don't know what the dollar amount would be, but the feedback from a prior council discussion was if we went forward, you likely wanted some type of program. Yet to be determined.
Or voted on. Or voted on. Okay. And then.
That's a good clarification just for everybody at home. There is no leaf blower ban in existence and there is no rebate program in existence at this point in time because the council has not taken any action on those.
Right. And the only last comment, I got called out of town last week in May, so I won't be around for Budget Workshop Three. Proceed without me or if you change it, I'm open to that too.
I would make one ask of all of you, which is if you do know something, share with Michelle, Celia and I because we try to, as you can imagine, putting the document and getting all of you together. But we can certainly, if somebody's going to miss something, we can brief you and get you all. But we would prefer, if it's possible, to try to move to a meeting day when you all can participate.
Okay.
But we're going to, something tells me it may be a more challenging year, even though we're trying to get these scheduled and on your calendar earlier.
Throw it out there.
Any final?
I just wanted to concur with my colleagues here because in the ca, you know, I'm all about emergency preparedness and, you know, the worst-case scenario is that the businesses would be very impacted, which would impact sales tax and TOT and everything else. So I certainly feel that we have to make a priority of putting those monies aside. I do.
I'll be at every budget hearing.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Town Manager, do you feel have, and Director King, do you feel you have what you need to go to Budget Workshop Number Two?
Yes, I think so. And we will bring much more accurate and, excuse me, sorry, more final information for you when we get to the Budget Workshops. And the policy review will be Workshop Number Three.
Well, thank you. I, I think this was a really good start.
But I won't be there.
Thank you all for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Celia. Obviously, you're suffering. We're sorry.
Thank you. I apologize for the.
No, go home.
So now, item number nine B, capital improvement program, Public Works Director Joe Tagliabashi. Thank you, Joe.
Just for a point of reference, the mayor wanted to make sure that this meeting had over fifty PowerPoint slides since he's not in attendance. I just want to put that out there for everybody.
We're going to tell them there were no slides. It took a minute and a half.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I have for your review and consideration, the capital improvements program for the five-year period from twenty-twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty-five. Tonight's presentation will include the programs and projects that are going to be rolled out in twenty-twenty, twenty, fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and also any projects that are new to the five-year program. I think it's fair to note, just to bring you all a little bit up to date on where we're at to this point in our five-year program. In the past five years, there has been approximately sixteen-point-seven million budgeted and spent on the CIP and the current year is approximately three-point-seven million dollars. So budget totals for this year, the proposed budget totals for the upcoming fiscal year, capital improvements fund fifty is eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. You'll see that there are some numbers in parentheses, five-hundred-thousand dollars for PK-003, the Oak Circle Path. We hope to get that project underway this year. That would, that really is dependent on us securing that right-of-way at West America Bank, which we're hoping to get done sooner rather than later, and then getting the approval to proceed. So that number may shift a little bit depending on when we get the notice to proceed and what the budget will be as we go into that next fiscal year. We will definitely be rolling some of the money over. We're not exactly sure exactly what we're going to need in terms of funding because that will be grant-funded. But we will need to start with some money in the fund so that we can begin the project before we start invoicing the state. Gas tax, that's around seventy thousand dollars. We take a conservative estimate on most of these funds that are going to be gas tax, Measure T, NSB-1. We would rather err on the conservative side and adjust our projects appropriately as opposed to overestimating and, and getting out in front of the funds that we have available to, to produce those projects. Measure T, six-hundred thousand. This one is actually a little bit different than, than the conservative estimate. We're basing this on the cost of the Washington Park emergency waterline repair. As you all are aware, a part of our policy is to do the utilities work in advance of doing the street work. This particular upcoming season is no exception, fiscal year. We are hoping to be able to do the Washington Park emergency water main and lateral repair. And then once that project is complete, we will come in and repave those streets that have been torn up during the course of that construction. We will use Measure T funds. And right now, the estimate for those funds is somewhere around five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Those funds have been, based on the past couple of years, have also been conservative. We think we're going to be in the neighborhood of six-hundred thousand dollars, but that's what we're going to need to do, the project to pave Washington Park after that construction work is done. SB-1, we use this money to do curb gutter and sidewalk. That number is a pretty solid number and again, estimated conservative. The water capital fund is the big number on this list. And that number is large because of the Washington Park emergency waterline replacement. That's the, the big number in that program is, is that project. Waste water treatment, the big number in this program is the remodeled project that's going on at the staff space and wastewater collection. That's some federally man, that's our mandated by the state for part of our permit, and we'll talk about that more as we get into this discussion. And then Funds eighty-one and eighty-two. Both of these numbers represent actual projects or equipment that will be purchased out of these programs as opposed to what you see on your matrix, which has a, two sets of numbers for eighty-one and eighty-two. This lower set and then what we were going to allocate to cover a future projects and programs in both of those categories. So getting into the meat and potatoes of the discussion, this barbecue, the, the area that we're looking at in this screenshot is at Community Center, Community Hall. It was originally designed to be an outdoor barbecue area. It hasn't really functioned well for that use, but it does function well for storage of some of the equipment that we use for the outdoor event. So Parks and Rec Staff Director Holland has asked if we could provide some additional wall, basically two walls there to help provide some aesthetic, basically give it some, some aesthetic value as opposed to what you see here. We think we might be able to do this in-house in talking with the Muni Ops Manager, Larry Hancock, however. the Muni Ops Manager Larry Hancock, however, should it be required to go out to contract, we estimate this job to be around forty thousand dollars, and this would be in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So this is new to this list. Replace the roofs on the bus shelters. This came about along with a project that's going to follow this. We have a JPA that we've been working with, National Cities is one. This one is a group of contractors who provide not only estimates for work, but they come out and also help provide some advice on where you're at in the service life of that particular roof. So in this case, we asked them to look at the courtyard roofs, but we also wanted them to have a look at the bus shelter roofs. It was driven in part by the fact that these are, were shingled roofs, and when we built them, shingles were kind of a quaint way to have a bus shelter. And we didn't have the same concerns that we have with fire, and the bus shelters are starting to show their age, especially the roofs. You all have approved a general plan that included some updates on shingles, and this is a good time for us to look at replacing the roofs on these shelters. It's ten thousand dollars. We would like to do it in the upcoming fiscal year. That would be for all the bus shelters. The second part of that was, and what initiated this discussion, was the corporation yard roof. This would not be a complete new roof. The roofing companies that we had looked at it, let us know that if we put this money into it now, it would basically restore the service life and reset the roof without tearing off and replacing that roof, which would be a few hundred thousand dollars. So this will give us another fifteen to twenty-five years, depending on the weather and what happens on the roof. But we need to do this this year. The roof is showing some wear, and if we were able to do it this year, it would help reset the clock and stop some of the leaks that have been kind of an ongoing nuisance over the courtyard garages. That would be done through the JPA, so that helps us with some of the bidding process that we go through. We did that with the post office roof, and it came out pretty clean. It came out on budget, and the contractor actually helped set up the bidding documents, so it works out very well for us. Community Wi-Fi hotspot, this is a placeholder. It's been in this spot for a couple of years. The Town Manager and I have been in discussions with a few providers of Wi-Fi services. Just in this last year, it really has started to kind of become more marketable, and certainly something that we can discuss with the ad hoc committee at the not-too-distant future. We think that this number will, based on what we've been hearing from the vendors, probably be real close to covering the cost. It may not even use most of this, if any of it. Some of the contractors and vendors are having some pretty unique ways to provide Wi-Fi for the town. So this Wi-Fi that we have been discussing would be covering from the north to the south end of town on Washington, and also provide Wi-Fi into Vineyard Park. So both parks, Veterans Memorial Park, Yountville Community Park, and the commercial areas in between those two parks, and also extend out into Vineyard Park, because we know that the town residents frequent that park, and we thought that it would be a good place to start our Wi-Fi network.
May I stop you there? Councilmember Dornbecker has a question.
Sure.
Yes, about the Wi-Fi equipment that we would put on poles, how did that perform during the fires in 2017? Didn't that also get damaged in different places?
I think you're talking about the cell infrastructure.
Yeah.
Those did suffer some damage, and that's why people had trouble with connectivity.
So are we still just contemplating also just putting them on poles that could also burn?
Though, our poles weren't affected. It was...
Well, I know ours weren't this time.
If I could on this, Councilmember Dornbecker, we're talking about something that's yet to be defined, but it would be installed and deployed in the town limit. So it would be enhancing the existing cell signal.
I understand that. I'm just concerned that it would be, in the case of a fire that did come to the valley floor, or, you know, a really catastrophic earthquake, that having that wouldn't do anything anyway.
We would still be vulnerable to some of the outside forces that are, that provide that service into town. So whether it's a cell provider or an internet provider, both of those come in on wooden poles or other infrastructure that is vulnerable to a variety of things, whether it's earthquake, flood, or fire. And this isn't made for an emergency service. It just, it's made for convenience.
I understand. I guess it's a sort of a technical question, and maybe it has to do with the science. Does the science dictate that they must not be undergrounded, these Wi-Fi spots?
Yeah, you need those antennas to be up above to be able to broadcast the signal and catch the signal.
I just, I feel that they're vulnerable.
I think, what I would also say, we don't disagree. I think part of what we're trying to do in ways is add some local redundancy and capacity, so that depending, we may have something. But I don't disagree. I mean, Public Works Director, you know, if all of the cell towers that feed Yountville, before they get here, go out, it's not going to help us. One of the things that, and these are some of the trade-offs that we're looking at, because some of the equipment is, we buy it and maintain it, and some is, we have a partnership potentially, and in exchange for low or no cost, they add some infrastructure, they sell and lease. So we have different models to evaluate, which is also why this has been evolving. We do know, I would say there's two things that I would say. One, we sit in an area that has low, we have some cellular voids. We don't have large numbers, so we're not a high priority for a lot of the cell carriers to come put new infrastructure in, because we don't have large numbers. I mean, I'm just, that's, they spend money where their accounts are first.
I understand.
And extending. So we think, there's a couple of reasons we're excited about this. One, as you all know, state law has changed, and by us having an infrastructure in place that could allow small cells, we actually resolve part of the potential issue about them coming and wanting to plant ugly things on our poles that we don't want. So we're still, this one's navigating about four different aspects, if you will, and it's probably a misnomer to call it the Wi-Fi, because when we started the conversation, it was about what can we do for something along those. But it's an evolving area. I mean, we couldn't, it could, a couple of proposals also include emergency preparedness, sirens, and other techniques. So right now, we're still doing a lot of research. We do anticipate a late February, early March meeting with the ad hoc committee.
And we're talking about public Wi-Fi here.
That's correct. And I think, just to go back to the origination of this discussion several years ago, it was about kind of filling out that world-class experience that visitors and residents to a lot of towns expect. And so this is really kind of taking that next step.
I remember, and I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, to your point, the cell phone companies were aware of lost revenue, because that's really what's going to drive them, and they're working to harden their facilities. It could take some time, you know, based on what we've been through in the past. Even batteries are kind of vulnerable, so...
In those areas, we really want to advocate some state law policy changes, because to your point, Councilmember Dornbecker, we were surrounded by certain cell infrastructure that did not have backup batteries. So there's some simple things that we believe that the cell service providers should be doing to improve that redundancy. So there's a lot of moving pieces in that, trying to improve our cell service infrastructure.
And while we're on the Wi-Fi, and I know we have talked about, it's mainly the Washington Corridor and then Vineyard Park. At what point in our budget discussion would we talk about what, whether and how, if so, how we could cover the whole town? Because to make it a resident experience also.
I don't want public.
Okay, so maybe I should wait for the committee report?
I think, yeah, let us, because there's...
Okay.
I mean, we're not, I want to clarify. We're really talking about the ability for you to be going down the main corridors and our large parks, using your phone and not having to be eating up your cellular data. It's going to be hard for us, I'm just going to be very candid right now. It's going to be hard to do that on every street in town because of the infrastructure that would have to be installed and the cost to do that, because there will be a reoccurring cost to provide the broadband. We can, we'll put some analysis...
No, I will wait. I've been told by the committee members that that will come forward, so I will wait for that.
But like I say, I just want you to know, the conversation is including things now like emergency siren, additional cellphone capacity, as well as cost, you know, security. You know, there's some things that the Sheriff's Department has talked about. How do we look at some things like that? So the programs are not apples-to-apple, because different vendors have different models for how they do that. And that's what we're trying to vet and better understand before we take it to the ad hoc committee.
And I think, based on other questions that we've had in past presentations, annual presentations on CIP, I think it's important that we help people understand, this isn't going to replace our home Wi-Fi. This is not made to download movies, and it doesn't have that kind of capacity, but it will help, like Town Manager said.
I had none of that in my mind.
Yeah, well, we have had that question from other residents in the audience at times, and I think it's important that we keep clarifying that it's not meant to replace your home Wi-Fi. It's meant to add some additional convenience as you walk through town, so that you're not using your own data. You're using data that's provided to you through the town's public system. So that's really what it's for.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hydroflush, the multi-use hydroflush, the weirs from Fennel to Beard Ditch. So this is, this is a program that is now going to be a part of our annual stormwater permit. It's meant to really help reduce the amount of sediment that is accumulating in some people's minds in the storm drain. So it's not a tremendous amount of money. It's probably going to be forty thousand dollars, I think I had in here. Hold on, let me look and make sure. Twenty-five. So twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a couple of days' worth of work. It really is driven more by the regulatory environment than something that the Muni Ops Manager Larry Hancock or crews or staff here at Public Works has noticed. And it remains to be seen how far this is going to go, but this is just the beginning of more stormwater-related regulations to help reduce sediment and other loads that are going into the creeks and streams and out into the ocean. The multi-use path from Oak Circle to Mission, we talked a little bit about this at the beginning of our presentation. So we are currently at about seventy percent design right now. We're working with an appraiser to help us nail down a number and a value for the right-of-way that we're trying to purchase from West America Bank. Once we agree on that number, they will then go into negotiations with the property owner, and we will be able to purchase the right-of-way and then get approval from Caltrans to go into the project. We'll go out to bid and get this project underway. We have a grant for five hundred thousand dollars. I think it's also important to mention that you all conditioned ad hoc, excuse me, to build the path, construct the path on their piece of the property, they will be paying, I think the deputy director figured forty-two percent of the cost of that path is going to be borne by the ad hoc. So we are, that includes the permitting, the design, not just the construction of the project. We met with a representative from Thomas Keller Restaurant Group last week. They wanted to kind of understand where they were at on the project and what their part of the project may include. We gave them what we thought it might be, based on past estimates, and they didn't seem all that surprised. So we will continue to invoice them for some of the legal bills that we have already incurred through discussions with them and other members of that project. And we hope to have better news that the project is out to bid in the very near future. The New Vineyard Path Park Construction. So this is a project that you all have looked at over the past couple of years. This will be in for design in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. There's thirty thousand dollars slated for design, and then it will go to construction with your approval in FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Estimate for that construction is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You will notice that the project is the, is the design that was both through P-RAC and through the council. This was the preferred design for that particular project. I think it's important to note that today, Parks crews planted an additional fifteen trees out at the Vineyard Park. Excuse me. It's our effort to help kind of do what we said we were going to do and provide some shield for the wall. We have some mature trees planted, and the trees that we planted today were a mix of mature trees and then some smaller trees to help provide some immediate kind of shielding of the wall and kind of helping to buffer some of what people perceive as just flood wall. So I think there were some questions about how tall those trees will grow, and those particular trees are similar to the one that's out here on the corner of Town Hall. It's a native tree. It's called a native strawberry. And it won't grow much more than fifteen feet. We'll keep it probably trimmed down much shorter than that, so that the people who have grown used to the view that they have now from their homes in the mobile home park can still continue to enjoy that view, while the people who have voiced some concern about having to not look at the wall will have that now group of trees shielding that, that wall. I apologize. Replace the play surface at Yountville Community Park. So this is one of the first projects I did when I came on board almost six years ago now. These surfaces definitely have a service life. This one will be up for replacement in twenty-one, twenty-two. We have seventy thousand dollars budgeted for that. In discussions with the municipal ops manager this morning on these projects, we will also most likely include Forester Park and the tot lot, because those were all done around the same time. Thank you. I appreciate that. The next project up on the list for this evening is the upgraded restroom at Yountville Community Park. We have some drawings, as you will see here, illustrated. This has been before the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I think it's important to note that the two hundred thousand dollars that we have budgeted for this project will cover both the construction of the lot and the construction of the building, which is a modular construction. And it's also paid for by Prop sixty-eight. This is the per capita grant, so that's, they're still trying to figure out the details of this, according to Director Holland. She's working with Public Works Department to help us secure this grant. And once we get the details of the grant, we'll be able to tell you a little bit more about the process and what to expect in terms of timeline. But that money is relatively, we believe that number is good, the two hundred thousand dollar number, both for the construction and for the amount of the grant. Shade structures at Yountville Community Park, this is for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. So we've noticed that while the park has had lots more visitors, we've been asked if there's a way to provide more shade for the picnic areas, both near the playground, in the kind of middle, what I'm going to call the middle of the park, and also down at the larger picnic area at the south end of the park. This wouldn't necessarily be the shade structure we're talking about, but I thought it was a good illustration of what people might find suitable at that park, based on feedback we had when we built the park. We have an estimate of around three hundred thousand dollars for those shade structures, and we're hopeful that this will also be qualified for grant money. and we're hopeful that this will also be qualified for grant money when it becomes available. The tilt trailer, we will haul a piece of equipment or mower around. Right now, we have a, a trailer that's reaching the end of its service life. It has ramps. Those ramps are functional, but they also come with the additional task of placing the ramps and there are always room for injury and accidents with that. This will help eliminate that, it's just a much better way to haul equipment around, a little bit more effective, much more efficient, and it's ten thousand dollars. It is slated for the upcoming fiscal year. The new Muni Ops truck, I think we originally had something in the range of, when I went to Parks and Rec Advisory Committee with this truck, forty or forty-five thousand dollars. We've, we continually try to refine these prices in the scope of work to get a better estimate as we approach our budget workshops and, and the deeper we get into the budget season, the better the numbers we can have. This is, this is a good example of that. This truck, we just got a price from a Ford dealer in Napa, thirty-two thousand dollars. That includes tax and license delivery and the upfitting that we require with the lights and toolboxes. So this will be for the Muni Ops Manager to replace a half-ton pickup. I think it was bought in twenty-oh-eight. Getting into the enterprise fund projects, hydrant repair and replacement. This is just a best management practice for water systems. It's something that we have, has been on our list for some time. Crews are out right now conducting surveys of where our hydrants are at in terms of their service life. So there are some that are going to be able to be repaired and there are some that are going to have to be replaced. This program will be an annual program for the next few years, thirty thousand dollars to begin repairing and replacing our hydrants in town. The emergency Wat, Washington Park Water Main Replacement Project. So we've talked a lot about this project tonight in various presentations. As you all are aware, the pipeline assessment that was conducted earlier this year revealed nine of the thirteen segments that were, four which were in dire need of replacement or indicated red on the map, if you recall, and five that were yellow and kind of were on the marginal edge in which you all indicated that if we had a preference, they, we should include a project that would include replacing those five segments along with the four that are in the replace-now zone. What you see on this picture is one of those areas. This is Utility Manager Don Moore showed up at sometime in the middle of the night to what somebody thought was a water leak and sure enough, it was. So I've seen a lot of water leaks in my life, I've never seen one scotting out of the ground like that.
Yeah, or a meteor-
Definitely not the wa, the way you want to see your water mains have challenges. So this project will go to bid with your approval sometime in the June or early July timeframe, which would put us into construction somewhere in the September, October timeframe, similar to what we did with Yount Street here this past year. And then the paving would go under construction sometime in the spring of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. That's, our estimates are around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project based on good data that we have from past projects here in town. The Joint Treatment Plant Office Modernization Project, it's in design this year. We're talking with PG&E right now about some facilities that, a transformer that they'll have to move. We've removed a tree that was problematic with a storm sewer line and was also going to cause some conflict with both PG&E and the building footprint. This project is slated to come in at around five hundred thousand dollars. It's going to include some additional staff space. It's going to include some, a small meeting space and plan space for them and a little small break area and an additional office for the Utility Ops, Utility Operations Manager, Don Moore. What you see here is the space for all of the above. So this is the staff space, Don's space and their lunch space. So it's quite crowded there, was built in nineteen-seventy-seven. Definitely time for an upgrade for that office space. Skated controls, so what you're looking at in this picture is what the board looked like originally in nineteen-seventy-seven when it was constructed. As you all are most likely aware, if you take tours of factories or breweries, even wineries now, it's operated from a computer monitor where they have a representation basically of this same type of a system. The, the really great part about SCADA is our staff is able to operate this system from their home. So they can use a smart device, they can get an alert that something's going on with a pump or a, or a motor, see what the problem is, work on that from their home to kind of do the redundant switch-over that we have. It gives them some time to get ready and go to the yard and see what they can do in additional that may need help. But in the past, what it would be, would be a beeper that would tell them there's something going on in the plant. They wouldn't have any idea what it really was, they would actually have to go out to the plant. Now with a smart device, they can just get on it and, and help remedy that in a more timely manner. So this will be a three-year program, budgeted for fifty thousand dollars a year. It's going to start in the upcoming FY twenty-twenty-one. Pipe burst, the Forest Main, so this was a project that was slated for twenty-one, twenty-two. It has a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. We're going to do some design work on that in the upcoming fiscal year. We have budgeted fifty thousand dollars for that. The consultant who we work with has let us know that they think that that's more than adequate to provide the design work for this project. It's about three-eighths of a mile of Forest Main that goes from the pump station behind the church up to the, the, the plant. So it takes all of the influence that we have from town, pumps it up to the, to the joint treatment plant where they can treat it and use it for recycled water if they, if, if we have the conditions that allow that. Annual programs, so I think it's important to, before we get into these annual programs, to talk about the fact that these are annual programs that have an annual budget, but they may not be a singular program. So if you look at the ADA Accessibility Program, that's a hundred and five-
May I interrupt you one moment? Sorry, would you like a glass of water? Please feel free to-
Thank you.
Because you still have more talking to do, I can tell.
I'm, I'm trying to, I think we got fifteen more slides left. ADA-
No water.
So the ADA Accessibility Program is a great example of something that's an annual program. Thank you very much. It's an annual program that has multiple projects within side the program. So we are working on remote, this will be year five of twelve for the ADA program. So that was approved by council. The Self-Evaluation and Transition Program for ADA was approved by council five years ago to remove the barriers that provide accessibility challenges to people who have that particular challenge, whatever that may be. So examples of that would be some of the doors that we had were too hard to open, so we had to adjust some of the, the door closers. Some of the, the fountains or the signage on the doors weren't quite the right height or didn't have the correct type of handicapped notification. So those are the kind of things that we've been working on. But we also are working on ADA ramps, that kind of thing. So some of the sidewalk work that we did in some of our parks project used some of this money. So we have, use it for a variety of things. And that's true for some of our other annual programs, townwide drainage. So that has, this year, I think we did two projects with the townwide drainage program. That's seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, that's what we have budgeted for that program. So this year, we were trying to continue to kind of diminish what we call fondly Lake Jessup, which is what happens when it rains on Padrone. The water kind of builds up, heads down towards Jefferson. It gets about halfway down Padrone and then pulls up and spills over to the other side of the street and causes some drainage issues on the other side of the street. We had a project about two years ago that put a storm drain out on Washington that took some of the water away. We just did an improvement with some concrete V-ditch at the base of the driveway at Jessup on Padrone and we think we have almost eliminated the problem. So that's a typical pro, project that we would do inside the drainage and erosion program. Surveys and monuments is another program that we use for right-of-way on, trying to define right-of-way on a public street, helping with town-owned properties and then continuing to establish our monument and surveys book. The annual street maintenance paving program, we talked a little bit about that earlier, Measure T. The annual street maintenance and paving program, GT thirty-twenty, is the gas tax component of our paving program. Traffic calming and then of course the curb gutter and sidewalk replacement that we use for SB one. Utilities programs have similar programs that are annual and then we run projects, multiple projects at times out of those programs. So inflow and infiltration and the sewer main repair and replacement program are both conditioned in our NPDES permit that we have to operate our sewer collection system. So the minimum that we would be required to spend is what you see in the budget that we proposed, eighty-two thousand five hundred for the I-N-I or inflow and infiltration and this sewer main replacement program is eighty thousand five hundred. So this year, we have done some slip lining and we're also trying to improve some of the areas around the laterals that come into the main and also improve some of the manholes where we have noticed some infiltration and inflow. The plant equipment replacement program is, is to build fund balance. We don't have any projects planned out of that program, but should a pump or something, a motor fail that we didn't foresee, this would be where we'd be able to fund that project or program out of. The town pump station equipment is, is similar to the plant equipment. So plant is up at the joint treatment plant, the wastewater recycling facility. The town pump station equipment replacement program, that the pump station behind the church, which we talked about earlier. And then finally, the water meter replacement program, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars. We're replacing meters on an ongoing basis. We may not use all of the money every year and if we don't, it goes back into fund balance and we're able to use that in the following year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the CIP for this year or for the next five years.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Tagliabashi? Thank you very much.
Kelly, all right. You're welcome.
Informative and interesting as always. Any public comment on the capital improvements program presentation? Seeing none, any council discussion on this item or is everyone satisfied? All right, thank you, seeing none.
Thank you very much.
We will-
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will move on to item number ten, staff informational reports. I believe there are none of those, is that correct? Number ten, staff informational reports. Wanted to make sure. So item number eleven is, has our council meeting reports, comments and agenda item requests. I'll just take them in order. Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, I attended that meeting today because the mayor is out of town. Mayor Jill Tekle was elected chair and Supervisor Brad Wagonconnect Vice Chair. The district engineer reported that finally, something that began in two thousand thirteen to try to get some federal funding for two segments of the flood wall is coming to fruition. They have now found out that they can now actually begin an application process for federal funds and they are working hard on it and hope to have a report sometime back to that committee, probably maybe by the March meeting. So local agency formation commission, LAFCO, Councilmember Mueller.
Just to be brief, we've been working on a very large project at MSR for master service review for all Napa County water and wastewater. And the first draft has just been released. I hear our Director Tagliabashi shaking his head, he must have seen it come by his desk. So anyway, big project for us and be lots of comment and public review coming up.
Thank you. League of California Cities update, Councilmember Dornbacher.
Okay, well, several of us attended policy committee meetings in Sacramento and I am on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee. And some of the, some of the projects that that committee wants to work on this year will be revenue modernization, including property tax and also implementation of the, implementation of that tax named after the, not eBay, but the one that we, it was-
Wayfair.
Wayfair, thank you. Wayfair. Anyway, so, and also the, there are more questions than answers for California cities about the potential state participation in the federal streamlined sales and use tax agreement. So we'll be getting, delving into that. And also, we talked a lot about cannabis and one of the, one of the things they're thinking of is reducing the excise tax on cannabis because it turns out that the legalization of cannabis with the taxes that are associated with it are driving the black market. And so they want to try and do everything they can to ameliorate that. So anyway, those are three of the multitude of things we're going to be doing.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mueller, anything for a league update from you?
Yes, there was a new bill that we're, had most of our meeting was focused on. It seems that last year was the first time the lights went out from a PG&E, P-S-P-S event down in the city of San Jose. And so they experienced what we've experienced for three years in a row, that the communication isn't perfect, the maps aren't always great. I could go on and on. And they also add into the bill, which I was one of the two people in the room who voted no because they were going to make PG&E pay for everything that defrosted in your freezer and I just thought that was a little much, so. And the other bill, we've spent a lot of time on, Gary hit on earlier today about the waste diversion and plastic bottles and what to do with all of our recyclables that are no longer recyclable. So that's a quick summary from environmental quality.
And I attended the Housing Development and Community Engagement Committee. It was very interesting. We focused a lot on S, Senate Bill fifty, which now has gone on to its great reward. But one of the interesting things that was discussed as an alternative to that was the possibility of doing some sort of a menu of things that a city or town might do to generate or encourage more housing and give some sort of weighted scale to the menu and then maybe in some way link that to funding. So that's just an idea floating around at the league, may or may not come back up with the demise of Senate Bill fifty. Item D, eleven D Cannabis Standing Committee, I will report on that. We are planning a meeting on February thirteenth. We have not finalized the agenda yet, but I believe it will contain some of the items that have been discussed by both our council and our residents. So it will be posted on the town's website and in all of our physical posting places around town. So look for that, please. Eleven E Parking Ad Hoc, is there any report out?
Yes.
Members Mueller.
The town has been working diligently on the north side of town for parking with some of our businesses over there. We expect to meet the parking committee- We expect to meet, the parking committee expects to meet on Friday, February 14th to discuss this and also meet with the community in that part of town as well.
On both of those committee meetings, one is a standing committee, so it will have a formal agenda. We will be sending out press release, normal information. And as Councilmember Durham has indicated, the focus of the parking ad hoc will be the three or four possible ideas that have been discussed in the no-yeo area and more of a resident-focused meeting.
Thank you. Emergency Preparedness Ad Hoc Committee. Councilmember Doren Becker.
Well, I don't have anything to report right now, but we are going to be getting into some planning for that. But I do have a report, or I do want to bring attention to the fact that the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities will be holding its first meeting, all counties meeting or all division meetings, on March the 19th. It's a luncheon meeting and it will focus on PERS and the executive director and the president of the Board of PERS will be presenting at that meeting. So that should be very interesting. And that'll be in Sisoun City. Thank you.
Reports and announcements. Gee, does anyone have reports or announcements? So I have a somewhat brief list. Councilmember Doren Becker and I will be going on Friday to the Association of Bay Area Governments meeting and we will report back from that. Here in town, we have the Yountville International Short Film Festival beginning on Thursday. There was a ribbon cutting at Handwritten earlier, no, last week. Time flies. So they are open. Heron House is open. Monte Cristi is open. As I think Commissioner Owens mentioned, the library is open to make Valentines for vets. They have all of the supplies there. The Lucy Liu exhibit, one of these things is not like the other, is open at the Napa Valley Museum Yountville. As I understand it, we are the first museum exhibition of her work. So that's quite a feather in the museum's cap. And I think Director Holland, isn't there something about some juried opportunity for being juried into the art sip and stroll?
Yes, so that's open through this week. And then we also have for an additional two weeks, the up and coming artists, which is the sponsored jury show as part of Arts Sip and Stroll for artists who've never participated in this type of show before.
Thank you. And also, in the arts realm, the Contemporary Tapestry has opened at the Community Center Gallery and is on display there. So with that, I think we have completed our agenda as we have no closed session. Any further comments or notes? Then I would certainly take a motion to adjourn to our regularly scheduled meeting of February 18th. Thank you all. So moved. First and a second. Thank you all for participating. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.